Are we on? Okay. This is special meeting.
Turn on your microphone, please. Turn the mic on.
Turn the mic on?
Yeah.
I thought, okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, okay. We're calling the June 3 meeting to orders, a special meeting agenda. Notice of temporary procedures. Do we need to go over that?
Ariel, do you feel we need to speak to any of the temporary procedures here? We do have people participating by Zoom on a published agenda as well as being able to participate by phone.
Commissioner.
And we will recognize them.
So if we have, if we have individuals that are calling through a phone, please hit star nine and that will raise your hand during questioning and we'll call you in order and your three minutes will begin at that time.
Perfect. And the webinar.
I didn't really catch that.
Webinar ID is nine seven four zero eight zero five thirty six thirty nine, just for factoids. All right. Let's go to, shall we have the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Eggers?
Sure. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call? Ariel?
Let's go. Let's recognize Chair Eglin is present, Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioners Eggers, Gibson and Navarro. We have a quorum chairwoman, two persons in chamber and three on the Zoom platform here. So moving on, thank you. Moving on to acknowledgement of certificate of posting.
Yes. We acknowledge the certificate of posting and go on to the consent agenda. These items will be considered as a whole without discussion unless a particular item is requested by a member of the commission staff or the public. So are there any public notifications?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
The acknowledgement of certificate of posting typically requires a motion.
Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to acknowledge the certificate of posting? Commissioners?
Let me make your motion.
Second motion?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Eggers.
I second that.
Thank you. It is so acknowledged.
You need to call the question, call for a vote.
Yes. Can we have a vote of all commissioners?
Aye.
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 Perfect.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Five to zero.
Okay. Now could we go on to the consent agenda?
Are there?
Very good. These items are considered as a whole. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be moved or spoken on?
The minutes.
We only have the meeting minutes from May twentieth if any of the commissioners wish to recharacterize or add or delete information that were included in the draft minutes. Otherwise, it can be acted upon.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Any comments? Seems to be none?
No. I moved through the draft meeting minutes as part of the consent agenda from May twenty, twenty twenty.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Five zero consent.
Asking for public comment on the consent.
Is there any public comment on the minutes?
It's possible.
If members of the public wish to speak on a consent item, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand on the Zoom app and we'll call your name. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Okay.
We have none.
Okay, we have any discussion of special agenda items?
There's nothing, nothing offered. I think it's just kind of a formatting in the agenda there. I think we are now on to the public hearing item. But before we begin and have the introduction by planner Daryl Boyd, do any of the commissioners have any disclosures or things they'd like to share before the item is begun?
Yes, I'd like to excuse myself from this item.
Let the record show that Commissioner Robert Rodriguez has recused himself from consideration of this item.
Thank you. I would like to mention something since we do get planning publications. There are some very good ones in the planning magazine for this month along with some very good information to access through publications. And I ordered the Greenway Imperative, which looks like it has some good information post COVID. So I would like to thank the RMA for putting all the planners on the American Planning Association so that we can get these publications and have various informative webinars available to us.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to public hearing. Is Mr. Boyd here?
Mr. Boyd is, is here.
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here.
Oh, my goodness.
Let me bring up the, let me bring up the presentation. First of all, I just want to thank all the commissioners for agreeing to hold a special meeting for this item. On behalf of the county and the applicant, we appreciate you all taking time out to consider this in the special meeting tonight. So the item before you is the John Smith Road landfill. It's a use permit application to do a stockpile immediately adjacent to the, the landfill site. Wait a minute, my controls aren't working. Oh, there we go. Staff, I'm Daryl. I'm not sure Kathleen's online or not. I know that Harry's online. So this is a, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a, an aerial photo that looks to the west overlooking landfill site. This is a photo that's included in your staff report. It's also included in the initial study document that was prepared for the project. And so this is, this is John Smith Road, a course that runs along the left-hand side. This area here, if you can see my little red dot, is the old City of Hollister landfill. It's been closed and is no longer in use. The areas that are being considered for this use permit tonight are just off-site from the existing permit boundaries of the landfill. And so this larger area here in the lower right is a stockpile, the proposed area that would be used for the native soil stockpile. This other smaller circle here that you see here would be the location for the storm drainage basin that's proposed for erosion control and water quality control purposes. The proposed project, and I'm just going to highlight some, hit some of the highlights, Madam Chair, from the staff report. The proposed project is for the short-term stockpiling of native soil that would be excavated from the landfill. And it's on about twelve point seven acres of a much larger piece of property, a legal lot. The applicant's original request was for fifteen years. They subsequently reduced that. That letter is included as an attachment to the staff report in your packet tonight. They subsequently reduced that request from fifteen to four years. They're requesting the stockpiling of up to three hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards. Just to give you a graphic, I always struggle with, with, you know, what's a cubic yard? How big is three hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards? Well, I did some calculations and it's equivalent to about six feet swimming pools. So if that gives you any sort of visual sense of what three hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards would look like. The soil will be stockpiled as it's excavated from the last remaining module in the landfill. That's the reason why they need to go outside of the permitted boundaries for the landfill to do the stockpiles because there's not enough room on site to do it. And so the, so it will be excavated from the last module and then stored. And then as it's, as a module is filled up with waste, garbage, the stockpile will be used for daily cover. And then on down the line, it will be used for intermediate cover as the, as the module is closed. One of the, one of the issues is, it's sort of an unknown at this point, is if the stockpile will be completely used up or not. In the event that the stockpile soil is not all used for cover or other purposes on the landfill site, there's a condition in the project that the stockpile would be re-con turbed, aligned with the metro photography. And of course, particulars would be determined on down the line depending upon how much soil is actually still remaining. And then, as we said, there's a pension base for erosion and water quality control. This is a copy of the site plan that's included in this, in the, in the packet. This shaded area here is that larger red outlined area that was on the aerial photo. That's for the stockpile. Excuse me, Madam Chair. As I say, the, the stockpile area is just off-site from what the landfill permit boundaries are. And that's why there's a need to do the use permit. And then the proposed erosion control basin is down here. In terms of general plan informants, the general plan designation, land use designation for the site is rangeland. The use, landfill use would typically be considered public, quasi-public use. The rangeland designation doesn't really speak to whether a landfill, public, quasi-public use would be allowed or not. So presumption is that it wouldn't be. But there are other policies when we determine general plan conformance, there are other policies that come into play. And this particular policy, this is public facilities and services policy, seven dot one from the general plan, essentially states that it's the county's obligation to make sure that the residents and businesses of the county are provided with a solid waste system. So that policy, along with the fact that the landfill is, is there, it's existing, it's operating, staff believes that you can find the use permit in conformance with, with the general plan. Although you, strictly speaking, it probably doesn't conform to the rangeland designation, but there's other policies that essentially would override that in this particular case. With regard to zoning, again, it's an interesting situation. If this was just a, a private property owner that wanted to dig a big hole on their property and stockpile soil, three hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards of soil on their site, they probably would just need a grading permit to do that. But in this case, because the, the stockpiling is associated with the operation of the landfill, it's not actually the landfill itself, but it's ancillary to its, its need to operate. Zoning code allows, has provisions in it that allow you, with the findings that we've included in the resolution and identified in the staff report, you can approve this use because it is essentially public, quasi-public use. That's needed to benefit residents and businesses of, of the county. So in terms of the stockpiling being consistent with the agricultural rangeland zoning district, again, the landfill's not a enumerated use. There are other ways to find zoning code consistency for the use permit. And so then, project that does include in the resolution, we've included some standard and special conditions that would be applicable to the use permit. A lot of the conditions are essentially borrowed from sorts of conditions that would be applied if this was just a grading permit, for instance. Because again, we're just, we're just dealing with stockpiling of soil. It's not necessarily, it's not really the landfill use per se itself that's being considered with this use permit. In terms of CEQA, the, the applicant had an initial study prepared for the project. Staff, county staff reviewed that initial study and with some comments and revisions, believe that the initial study and its conclusions that a negative declaration could be granted for the project to clear it for CEQA purposes represents, and all of that effort represents the county's independent analysis and judgment with regard to the potential CEQA impact. As noted in the staff report and in the initial study document itself, which is attached in the packet, was a conclusion that there was no substantial evidence that the project might have a significant effect on the environment. And because there were no potentially significant impacts identified in the initial study, in this particular case, there aren't any mitigation measures that are being required of the project. A lot of the conditions essentially are mitigation measures, so to speak. And lastly, then, the preparation of an EIR is not, not required in this particular case. So we think that with the, the initial study was accurate, adequate, and its conclusions about the potential impacts of the project are, are such that a negative declaration could be granted to the project. So in terms of staff's conditions, and again, this is just reiterating, once in the staff report and in the draft resolution, it's included in the packet. We're asking the commission to consider and approve the negative declaration and find that it's complete and in compliance with the requirements of CEQA. There are findings that are included in the staff report and the resolution that demonstrate consistency with the general plan and the zoning code. We're asking you to use those to make that finding, make that determination for general plan and zoning code conformance. And then lastly, Madam Chair, we're asking the commission to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six to approve the permit, the use permit, planning file number two hundred, two thousand twenty-one. With the findings and the standard and special conditions as recommended by staff, and I think that draft resolution is included in the staff report in the packet. There have been no changes to the resolution since the packet was circulated, other than the applicant did review the conditions of approval and has agreed to those as they were, as they were written in the draft that you all received. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to take any questions. I would just also highlight for you that I know Mr. Tom Riley, who is applicant's representative, is in the, in the audience somewhere this evening. And I think Mr. Riley wants to make, make some comments, maybe a brief presentation. He also has his technical, some of his technical experts available if there are technical questions that the commission might have with regard to this. And again, just to underscore, I think, one last time, this is a use permit for a soils stockpile that's related to the landfill. It's not actually changing any of the existing operation requirements of the landfill. I'm happy to take any questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Mr. Eggers? Mr. Gibson? No? I have.
Would I stop, Chair? Kevin? Yes, please do. Okay. So we're not getting audio or feedback from the board chambers at this point. Okay.
Yes, Commissioners, are you hearing us? Mr. Eggers?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Do you have any questions of the project?
No, no question at the time for me.
Mr. Navarro? Mr. Gibson?
No, not this time for myself.
No.
Okay. I have, in reading through the packet, wondered if this landfill is going to be adequate or up until twenty thirty-five?
That's a really good question, Madam Chair, that has come up as a part of the staff review of the application. Technically speaking, that's really outside the scope of this particular use permit. But I would note that, that the, the life of this, the term for this use permit is only for four years. And that could perhaps indicate that maybe the landfill as it currently exists is starting to get lower in, in terms of its capacity. But, but I think that that's probably a question that's better answered by others that are in the meeting this evening. Because I, and I guess I would just highlight one other thing, there is, there is an overarching landfill operating agreement between the county and Waste Solutions and Waste Connections is the operator of the landfill. And so this use permit is not intended to change or amend any of those conditions for that landfill operating agreement. And so questions such as how much capacity is remaining and so forth really would be addressed under that landfill operating agreement. But I'll yield floor and see if there's anybody else that might want to speak to that. Or Mr. Riley might be able to speak to that when he makes his comments, Madam Chair.
Yeah. If I can add something, this is Harry Mavregenis. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. There is an agreement that the county has reached with the Waste Solutions, and I think Mr. Riley can address it in more detail. But it will involve a larger site immediately around this. They will have to come in for use permits and environmental review on the entire site at a later date when they contemplate expansion. The current landfill is on its last cell, basically, the one that they're excavating now. And once that is excavated, the capacity of the current site, I think, will be completed. And I'll yield to Mr. Riley to maybe add anything to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So the fifteen-year original request on the permit taken down to four years at this point has no real reflection on the life of the landfill as it exists?
That's correct.
Thank you. Let's see. Do we have any comments from the public or participant and the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's hear from Mr. Tom Riley, who's representing Waste Solutions and, and any of his professionals that he wishes to address matters.
Thank you.
Certainly. Can you all, this is Tom Riley. Can you hear me?
I can. We can.
Excellent. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
I believe, I think we've given you permissions.
Much better to see a face.
So can you?
There we go.
You can see this screen. I just want to make sure that you can see it says photo date five eighteen twenty twelve?
Yes.
Everyone can see that? Okay, excellent. So, Madam Chair, members of the commission and staff, Tom Riley, I'm one of the regional engineers operating in California and responsible for providing engineering support to the John Smith Road landfill. I wanted to acknowledge that we have, well, first of all, I want to thank you also for the special meeting. It certainly helps based on our schedule that we're trying to meet. So thank you. I want to acknowledge that we have three other people that can respond to any questions that you might have. We have Dave Brown from Lawrence and Associates, who put the design drawings together for the soils stockpile. So if there's detailed questions that you want to ask, he can certainly respond to those. We also have Doug Brown from Lawrence, from Douglas Environmental, who prepared the environmental analysis. So if there's any questions associated with that, he's available. And finally, we have Paul Nelson. He's our divisional vice president. And if there's questions regarding commitments or those types of things, or with the previous or existing agreement, he can also address those if I cannot. So the presentation I want to make tonight is a fairly short presentation, but I want to highlight the need for soil and therefore the need for soil stockpiles. And then I have about nine slides here that show a progression of landfill development, which gives, which will give the commissioners and staff a really good sense of how the landfill is developing and where we've put soil already for stockpiles. And again, the future location or the proposed location of the next stockpile. So why do we need soil for landfills? So as we place garbage in a landfill on a daily basis, it gets covered with soil. So use number one is daily cover of landfills. And then when you finish at the end of a useful life of a landfill, you're going to need to place final cover. And that final cover consists of soil also, can be four to six feet in thickness. So we have daily cover and we have final cover. And to give you the sense of how much daily cover is used, twenty to twenty-five percent of the volume of the landfill when it's completed is daily cover. So it's a significant portion. So that's why we need soil. And so why do we need soil stockpiles? So when we're, we calculate, the engineers calculate the amount of need based on daily and final cover. And then we look at the area of future module or cell development. And we say, okay, we can get all the. And we say, okay, we can get all the soil that we need from excavating at depth these future modules. And the excavation and depth match the need that we, that you need for daily and final cover. And a landfill then isn't all developed all at one time. You don't take all of your approved footprint for where garbage can be placed and develop it all at one time. You develop in a sequence of modules, cells. And John Smith has been developed over, it has, or will have eight modules. And so you develop them in sequence, and we have been constructing a module about every other year since we started operating the landfill. So that's the, and as we excavate each module, the contractor has to place that excavated soil someplace, and so they need a stockpile location. And so that's why we need stockpiles as we excavate new modules. So I'm showing you the John Smith Road landfill. This aerial photo was taken in 2012. And what's, orientation, John Smith Road here, we have the landfill entrance here. And the first module that was developed was an unlined module. All future modules from Module One were lined with compacted clay and very thick plastic materials. But this module here was the unlined module. So when we took over operating in 2004, 2005, this was the only module that was available for use. And all of this area that you see here is for what was approved for landfill development in a sequence of modules. And what we see here, we developed, this was the next module, Module Two, was done in 2007. And we have two modules that are sitting here, 3A and 3B, which were done in '09 and '11, '29, 2009 and 2011. And what you also see is here is where we were placing our soil stockpiles in this area here. And we were also, this is in an area of future modules, so four, five, six, and we're actually also taking soil from here. So on a daily basis, we could draw from an existing stockpile, or we can draw from an area that needs to be excavated for a future module. This area here is the Class One landfill. And I don't know if you know the history of the Class One, but it was two ponds in basically this area here, and they were used to manage liquid that was generated from rinsing agricultural tanks and containers. And it was officially closed. It's owned by the City of Hollister, and the responsible agencies, the primary agency is the State Department of Toxic Substance Control with a minor regulatory environment by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So at this time in 2012, with the development, the county was already looking and planning to expand the existing landfill by 15 acres coming in approximately this area here. So you can see that there wasn't any room to put any more stockpiles on the south side of the landfill. And all of this, this area here is all fairly steep slope, so it's not conducive to additional stockpiling. So we started planning and having conversations with the City of Hollister and also the Department of Toxic Substance Control about putting a soil stockpile on top of this closed hazardous waste landfill. And we were able to obtain the appropriate approvals to do that. And so as you see, as we progress on an annual basis, you'll start to see how that Class One landfill is used. So again, we're now in 2013, and we have John Smith, we have the entrance. You can see the unlined module sitting here. The two modules, 3A and 3B, were shown here. Now you can see this soil stockpile that are here. You can see us borrowing soil from here, future area of module development. And again, no soil had been placed in this area yet. And if you were driving on this road here and looking to the east, this would be actually an area of lower elevation. So it was actually an area that was really right to be used for soil stockpile because it was already low in elevation and provided additional capacity. So we'll progress to the next year, and you can start to see how things are going. We have now constructed a module here, which is Module Four. And when we excavated the soil for Module Four, we started placing it in the Class One area. And you can see the first stages of a stockpile here. And again, you can see the landfill being built up here, and this is, again, a future module here. And we'll progress to 2015, and this is a somewhat more difficult photo to look, so I won't spend any real time on it. Again, John Smith Road is down here. We have the entrance here, a previous stockpile here. We're borrowing soil from here. And here's the Class One area up here, and we're placing waste in this area right here. So the next photo for 2016 is much clearer. And now you can see the landfill in the lined area starting to build up on elevation. It's being sloped against the unlined module here. And you can see that we've now excavated Module Five, Six, which it was in this area. It's already halfway full, and this is the remaining portion. And this soil from here was placed on another couple lifts of soil. So you can see how it's already being built up in this area. And again, we, for daily cover needs, we've gone back into an existing stockpile for soil here. And we proceed to 2017. And again, John Smith Road for orientation, the entrance. And again, no additional excavating of cells. We've completed what was approved prior to this area of future expansion. And now we're just filling this area. We're borrowing from some stockpiles here. And again, no additional filling in the Class One stockpile. And we proceed to 2018. Kind of a cloudy picture here, again, John Smith Road, the entrance. Again, borrowing from here, more filling in the last cell prior to expansion. No additional stockpiling here. But you can start to see that this portion of landfill that's lined is starting to get to the same elevation of the unlined module. This next slide is much clearer, and again, John Smith Road, orientation, entrance. So now this is that expanded 15-acre area, and this is the first module. It's called 788. And when we excavated this module, more soil was placed on the Class One area. Again, we're filling in the lined area. And now there's no real separation between, from a visual standpoint, from what was unlined and lined. It kind of looks like all one big unit. So, and you can see where some excavation for daily cover is happening here. And now the last slide brings you to January of 2020. Again, we have John Smith at the south end and the entrance. And we've now developed another module, and the soil from this module then completed the maximum grades approved by DTSC, or Department of Toxic Substance Control, for the Class One. And that now brings us to a need to stockpile in the proposed stockpile area, which is right here. So to answer the one question that came up on life of the landfill, so right now, we currently are accepting about 1,000 tons a day. And if that rate continued, it would last five more years. But in our operating agreement with the county, we always, not always, we were committed to always providing the county with 15 years of capacity. So the plan now is to, if I move back to one of these earlier versions that show a little bit more of the overall landfill, and this one looks pretty good. We have recently purchased 388 acres that is in this area, includes where the stockpile is going to be. And we are in conversations with the county and currently planning, doing environmental analysis for this expansion and hope to have this expansion approved. The permitting should be done in two, two and a half years with all permits that are necessary to operate in that area, well within the remaining five years of life of this site. And again, if this was delayed for some reason, we could cut down flow coming into the landfill from out-of-county sources to extend the life of this existing landfill. And again, there's a commitment to always provide 15 years of life. Now, the good news about this 388 acres, it provides, you know, 50 to 75 years of capacity. And Waste Connections has purchased this property, and as soon as all of the permits for expansion, this 388 acres will be deeded to the county, which will go along with the current 75 acres that are currently owned by the county. So all of the expansion, 388, the existing 95, will be under the ownership of the county. So that addresses the questions that, the two questions that I thought I heard. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. That was Mr. Riley? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So what I'm wondering is, and I believe this is, it's pertinent to consider the whole project, just for clarification for later on, if you're considering that there's an expansion within the next five years and that there's studies going on on the neighboring property, then to just look at that in light of what you're doing today. Do we have any current problems with water in that area or any contamination coming from that original spot that was...
Yeah. Yes, if I may, Madam Chair, this, the unlined landfill does have an ongoing historical leakage that is, occurred prior to Waste Connections operating the landfill. And our operating agreement stipulates that it's county responsibility for dealing with that leakage. And so it's being managed. There's a series of extraction wells here and that water. Any water that's migrating from east to west comes in this direction, picked up by these extraction wells. And at this point, that water is being, there is a pipeline along John Smith Road landfill, and that water is then sent to the City of Hollister wastewater treatment plant.
I see. So there's no residual problems with wells in the neighborhood?
No, I believe when they, the county did their initial investigation of this lateral migration from this unlined unit, they installed a number of monitoring wells here and off, over to this side, and indicated that there was a plume coming in this direction, and that's why they installed some of these, some, but they installed a number, I believe there's three of them, extraction wells in this vicinity.
Thank you very much.
And at this point, the regulatory, right, and at this point, the regulatory agencies are happy with that containment program.
Are there any further questions from the commissioners? And do we have any further public comment? Anyone waiting online?
If you're joining us by phone, please hit star nine now. If you're on the Zoom app, please hit the raise your hand and we'll call on you. We have none, Chair.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on our situation here? Staff recommends the planning commission adopt the negative declaration, approve use permit, find the use permit consistent, find the use permit in harmony, and find the use permit will serve the public necessity. Do we have a motion to approve the application? Commissioner Gibson? Did I hear you say something?
If there are no other comments from the other commissioners, I move to adopt the negative declaration. Approved use permit, PLN 200021, with condition as recommended by staff. And we find that the use permit is consistent with the 2035 general plan because the use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and the use permit is in harmony with the applicable elements or objectives of the general plan and that it serves the public necessity.
Do I hear a second?
I second Commissioner Gibson's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eggers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four to no, four to zero. One, what do you call that? Abstaining, excused, one commissioner excused. Thank you. So it is hereby approved. Thank you very much. And do I hear a motion? Or is there any further comment necessary? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Eggers?
I motion to adjourn this special meeting of the planning commission.
Second?
And I will go ahead and second that motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. We are so adjourned.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.